This time, I'd like to call the October Macon County Board of Commission meeting to order. And I think we'll get right to it. At this time, Ms. Tammy, do you have any announcements?
I do. I have a couple. The first one is just a reminder that the November board meeting will be on Thursday, November the 13th. That was per your approved schedule this year because November the 11th is Veterans Day. And then, we have a special call joint meeting with the Board of Education on October the 21st at 9:00 a.m. here in the boardroom.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Cabe?
Mr. Chairman, I actually have two. The first one, I'm not really pleased to have to announce, but tonight will be the last regular meeting for Ms. Lori Carpenter. Mrs. Carpenter is going to retire at the end of the month, and I just want to express my appreciation to her. She's been an asset to us in Macon County. She has kept us with an impeccable financial record, and she will certainly be missed. We want to certainly wish her the best as she goes on into some other endeavors, but she's certainly been a true asset to us, and she's been a benefit to me to help walk me through this process from what I got thrown into. And it's just been a pleasure to work with her, and I certainly regret to see her go, but wish her the best.
She's been incredible, Ms. Lori.
And, Mr. Chairman, my second announcement. Obviously, we cannot be without a finance officer, so effective November the 3rd, Ms. Lindsey Leopard, I have made her the interim finance director for Macon County, and I'm confident with the abilities that she has, and I'm confident that we'll still be in good hands, and she will maintain the levels of excellence that we have come to expect.
Thank you, Mr. Cabe. Welcome, Ms. Leopard. All right. Commissioner Breeden?
Out of everything.
Commissioner Antoine?
Ms. Lori, we're going to miss you. Thanks for all your help and work you've done. Thank you so much.
Ms. Lori, I wish you the best in retirement. Mr. Shields?
I'd like to make--
You might go.
Yeah. People tell me I don't talk loud anyway. I'd like to make one announcement. It's on the consented agenda, which is the last thing we do, and I'm afraid you're going to be gone. You'd leave. Anyway, tonight, we'll ask for approval of a resolution supporting Operation Green Light for veterans here in Macon County. And the dates for that will be from November the 4th to Veterans Day, November the 11th. Let me just read you a little piece here. Be honest about it, I'm guilty. Last year, I dropped the ball on this. This year, I'm going to make up for it, being a veteran. This is basically, there's-- And, Chubb, I'll get you something by the paper in the morning after we get this approved tonight. He says, "Be it further resolved"-- What did I think that day? "Be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, Macon County encourages its citizens and patriotic tradition to recognize the importance of honoring all those who made immeasurable sacrifices to preserve freedom by displaying green lights," and I'm sure one's fine too, but it says it's plural, "green lights," "in a window or their place of business or residence from November the 11th"-- no, correction, November the 4th through November the 11th. And I'm going to hit the street tomorrow trying to get this movement going. I've been talking with some people, making sure. Last year, the reason I dropped the ball was I didn't have any blue lights. I didn't alert the people that, hey, we need to go ahead and order something. So I've been talking with some people. They're in the process of ordering their blue lights, and so, as we move on to this, it's a great honor to have this duty, and I'll be working on that tomorrow, and I'll be going by and seeing our media people and giving them Mr. Young's signature on one of these sheets for tomorrow. And I want to say thank you for being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shields. Commissioner Sherrill?
Ms. Lori, I'd just like to thank you as well. It's-- you're a very big asset and have been for many, many years. I've had the pleasure of working with you the last three years and keeping us up to par, so, thanks very much.
All right. Mr. Legal Counsel?
I'm under oath.
All right. This time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Shields to lead us in a moment of silence in a pledge of allegiance.
Let's stand, please, Mr. Bacon. Salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
This time, we have three, four public hearings. I'd like to ask Ms. Darlene to come up. Thank you.
The first one is our 5311 grant. That's the normal grant we get every year from the feds. It's an 8510 grant. Our allocation is given to us by the state, so we don't ask for money. This is just what we're going to get. And the county share is 15%, but it could be 10% if the state puts money in. The match on this grant is-- oh, the grant is $230,232 is our allotment. The match will be $34,535.
Perfect. All right. This time, I'd like to open the public comment. I'm sorry, open the public hearing. Do we have any--
No one has signed up to speak.
I understand nobody's signed up to speak. Would anybody like to speak? All right. This time, I'm going to close the public hearing.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 5311 admin grant as presented.
I hear a motion by Commissioner Sherrill. Second by Commissioner Shields. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm, stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, Tammy. Please let the record reflect 5-0. All right. Public hearing number two.
The next one is a 5310 operating grant. This grant supplies funds to elderly and disabled persons. We're asking for $300,000 on this grant. It's a 50-50 grant. The $150,000 that would be the match will be matched with our rope funds and Medicaid funding and possibly our block grant funds. So it's transit covers the match.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Anybody sign up to speak?
No.
Nobody signed up to speak. Would anybody like to speak? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to approve the 5310 elderly and/or disabled grant as presented.
I hear a motion by Commissioner Sherrill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm, stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, Ms. Tammy, 5-0. All right. Item number three.
Capital grant. This allows systems to buy capital projects. On this grant for FY '27, we will be replacing one 22-foot cutaway. That includes the lift and all that, plus the lettering, the propane conversion, and we're also asking for the replacement of four desktop PCs and monitors that have reached their-- will have reached their life by '27. The total for this grant is $167,532. The match on this grant is $16,754.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Has anybody signed up to speak? Would anybody like to speak? I like these. This time, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the combined capital grant as presented.
I hear a motion by Commissioner Sherrill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm, stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? 5-0, Ms. Tammy. All right. Item D.
Concept grant. This is what has been funding our WNC Express that runs to Asheville Monday through Friday from 10:00 to 2:00. We're asking for $200,000. This is a 50-50 grant. The $100,000 match will come from the billing from Jackson County, Swain, and Haywood County, and from fares from our passengers.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Nobody signed up to speak. Would anybody like to speak? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve the concept grant as presented.
Hear a motion by Commissioner Sherrill.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm, stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. We're 5-0 again, Ms. Tammy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Darlene. All right. Moving on. Additions to the agenda. Anybody? All right. We'll enter into the public comment period. We have four speakers. Gosh, I believe that's Pearl. I'm sorry. It's not. Pearl Phillips? Am I right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. I come before you tonight as a member of this community whose heart is broken and soul is burdened. In the last month in western North Carolina, three women have lost their lives violently to domestic violence. I myself am a survivor of domestic violence and almost lost my life two years ago. I have spoken to Mayor Horton and gotten the proclamation from him, and I presented him with a flag to show a support for October being Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I come before this board to ask the county to do the same. I have a copy of the proclamation that I gave Mayor Horton, and I also have flags for the county to fly that my family, the Dunkins, is donating. There's five flags for each of the districts of Macon. Domestic violence is an issue that is seldom talked about. We know it's there, but it's a prevalent health crisis that gets little acknowledgement. And while you might think that even though it's not something that's prevalent in our county at this time, as far as the homicide rate goes, it is very much so an issue. I pulled some statistics from the North Carolina Department of Public Safety Violence Profile for Macon County that was published April of this year, and the profile was from 2020 to 2023. And it stated that 42% of all homicide deaths in Macon County involved an argument or conflict, and they further broke down the statistic to state that exactly 1 in 3 male homicides were precipitated by another crime, and exactly 1 in 3 female homicide deaths involved intimate partner violence. The data for 2024 is still pending, but in 2023, Macon had 39 violent crimes. The most common violent crimes were aggravated assault at 59% and rape at 25.6%. And it would be my hope and prayer that this county would see the issue and the health crisis and the plight that this has become on our community and our surrounding western North Carolina counties, and that it would do the proclamation and fire the flags and support an awareness of domestic violence, because it's through awareness of domestic violence and shining a light on the issues that will bring more awareness to it and hopefully stop the public health crisis.
That's incredible. Thank you for your time and courage. Can I have the proclamation and maybe even the flags? Can I have all that? Thank you. Thank you. I think I'll make copies and share with the board, and I don't see any big problems. Do you guys see any problems?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shields. All right. Ms. Betsy Baist.
Thank you for allowing us to speak. Good to see you. I am here to speak in support of positive shelter volunteers. You have a very large proposal in your packet tonight of what the organization plans to do in taking over the animal shelter, and I hope that you consider that very seriously and with a positive outlook on what they've put together for that. And I have one question. Where's our pickleball courts? Like to know that. Like to know that.
Thank you, Ms. Betsy. All right. Bill McCarly. You're up.
Thank you all. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of the Macon County Water Quality Advisory Committee, which presently consists of nine individuals, each of us expert in one or another field related to the types of environmental issues Macon County frequently faces. Our members, eight of us residents of Macon County plus one from Swain County, offer experience and expertise in fields including agriculture, aquatic biology, civil forensic and structural engineering, fluvial geomorphology, governance, hydrology, law, livestock management, natural history, stream restoration, whitewater rafting, and I probably forget a few. Following the disappointing experience that Macon County had post-Darlene with the Corps of Engineers, we decided that we should volunteer our services as consultants to county government, including the Board of Commissioners, so that we can all be better prepared for whatever is the next environmental problem which will confront us. And on July 15th, we sent a letter to Mr. Cabe, which he subsequently shared with the commission, offering our services free of charge to consult on any issue which lies within the realm of our collective expertise. One of you, Commissioner Shields, expressed interest in discussing this offer as part of a regular commission meeting, and we had hoped to see it on a subsequent commission agenda. To date, three months later, we have received no formal acknowledgment of our offer. Now, we're familiar with the word busy. We know what it means, and your agenda for this evening exemplifies that you two are busy. We understand. Nevertheless, we remain hopeful of getting some positive feedback from the commission on this matter. And just to reiterate and underline, we are not talking about paid professional consultancy, and we have no ambition to be involved in regulatory functions. We're offering our help on a voluntary consultative basis as citizens and experts. Now, to move the ball a little further down the field, I was going to introduce one of our other members, Katie Price, a hydrologist. Is she here yet? If not, I think I can get Carolyn Porter to read her statement. She wanted to talk about one particular issue in this category. So that pretty much covers what I have to say. Again, I'm open to discussion with anybody, anytime, and we all are. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Oh, I brought, just in case, here's some copies of what I had to say. There aren't enough to go around, so please don't fight over them. I didn't sign them, so they're not real valuable.
Katie Price.
Can I speak in Ms. Price's house, so she's not-- They will make it.
Come on up. No problem.
I'm glad that Ms. Price sent me her statement. I'm Carolyn Porter. I'm another member of the committee, legal educator at Southwestern Community College for many years, and I will not be delivering this with my usual polish that I save for my students, because I wasn't expecting to speak to you tonight. But Ms. Price, who's the executive director of the Watershed Association of the Tuckasee River Water, that organization works to protect water quality throughout the Tuckasee River system, and of course, there are parallels with our desire to protect the upper Little Tennessee system. Both are headwater watersheds whose clean rivers are essential to recreation, tourism, property values, and sustain our regional economy. Ms. Price wanted to highlight one concern that we all share that is water quality. She notes that the Little T has a persistent E. coli contamination issue with all but one Macon County water monitoring site exceeding the safe swimming level because of E. coli contamination 60% of the time, and that includes Parker Meadows, even all the way up there on Kirtukajag. This is public data. It directly affects how visitors and residents might view the safety of our waters and the choices they make about recreating here. They see the same challenges on the Tuckasee gene, so our committee, by having membership from both counties, we all benefit from that. She notes that the primary source tends to be human. While wildlife and livestock contribute E. coli to our water systems, failing septic systems and leaky wastewater infrastructure are common source points. She says, "Once the bacteria enter the river, they can be established in the sediment and just keep reappearing every time flows rise or you have a flood event." That keeps counts chronically high. She says that, she adds, "That means erosion and sediment control aren't just aesthetic or engineering issues, but are essential for ongoing water quality linked to our public health and our economy." She notes that addressing these problems would protect both our water and our region's reputation for our clean and exceptional rivers, which we all enjoy. She offers this as an example, and our whole group offers this as an example of ways that we could come together with our services to help benefit Macon County and the Little Tennessee watershed. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That wraps up public comment. Any adjustments to the agenda? Hearing none. Looking to entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Hear a motion by Commissioner Breeden?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Antoine. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please raise your right arm, stating aye. Aye. Any opposed? 5-0, Ms. Tammy. All right. Moving on. Reports and presentations. North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, heroic hands. I'm celebrating public service award-- I'm sorry. Celebrating Public Service Award. Ms. Tammy Keizer.
I had to ask Mr. Cabe to assist me, because this is a two-person-- 2024-25 North Carolina Association of County Commissioners President T. Davis launched the Heroic Hands Initiative earlier this year, which was designed to honor the often unseen but deeply felt contributions of county staff and the essential roles of public service workers. Nominees reflect the profound difference they make in their role, the lives they touch through their service, their dedication, and the positive impact they make in their county every day. The North Carolina Association of County Commissioners published a book with the recipients and their nomination letter. Macon County is pleased to recognize Ms. Polly Crunkleton, HR specialist, as our recipient for this award. Polly, will you come forward? You guys stand up here. So we have a plaque for Ms. Polly and a service coin from the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. I'm going to give you that, and then I'm going to read her nomination letter that was submitted for her. "In October of 2024, Polly Crunkleton began helping a county employee file for disability retirement through the local government retirement system after he was diagnosed with a medical condition that left him unable to speak or work. Polly communicated with him by written notes, texts, emails, becoming his advocate and voice with medical providers, county departments, and the North Carolina retirement system. While the employee had no income from October to January, Polly continued supporting him by submitting required documents, organizing a food drive, and sharing resources for assistance. In March 2025, she contacted North Carolina Representative Carl Gillespie's office, and by April, six months after he became unable to work, the employee received his first check with back pay. Polly's persistence, compassion, and advocacy ensured a positive outcome. Her selfless dedication exemplifies her commitment to the employees and citizens of Macon County and makes her a deserving recipient of the Heroic Hands Award."
Thank you, Ms. Polly. All right. Positive Shelter Volunteers Proposal for Assuming Operations of the Animal Shelter. County Manager Cape and Meg Kramer. Volunteers.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to introduce the Positive Volunteer Group. We had asked, we actually put an RFP for proposals several months ago to see if anybody would be interested in providing us with a proposal to operate our animal shelter, and this is the one proposal that we received. Commissioner Cheryl and Commissioner Braden and myself have already met with her and went over her proposal, and we felt like it was prudent tonight for her to come and give you a general summary of the proposal that she had presented. So, Meg, floor is yours.
Hello, and thank you so much for this opportunity to present, hopefully, what will be a winning formula for Macon County, the animals of Macon County, and positive shelter moving forward. I would assume or presume that in this meeting, we are not going to be getting into the nitty gritty and specifics. I hope that you have at least been able to sort of glean the, the general contents of our proposal. I'd be happy to get into more specifics if you wish, you know, wish me to do that. But for tonight, what I was really hoping to emphasize was where I see things moving forward and why I feel this is actually going to be beneficial for you as well as us, and especially for the animals and the welfare of the animals of Macon County and the owners of the animals in Macon County. As you know, there's a very large constituency of, of animal lovers in our county, and we want to do right by the animals that come into our care. So, one of the key components of what I feel we bring to the board is our experience. Positive Shelter Volunteers has been side by side, boots on the ground, so to speak, with the employees at the shelter on a daily basis, caring for the animals. I actually have 11 of them at my own home right now that I'm caring for, to help them through their illnesses, help them grow in, in safety and comfort. All of our volunteers bring special gifts to the table in terms of their contributions, whether it's socializing, walking, caring for the dogs, helping to clean, feed when we are always short-staffed. And with that knowledge, knowing how the shelter currently runs, I feel that we can bring to the table some very good ideas on how to improve the function of the shelter and the efficiency of the shelter for future use. I look at it as this is going to be a collaborative effort between county and 501(c)(3), which is what we are. The reason why I see this as being a win-win is being collaborative, you guys are limited being a municipality. You have your funding, you have your budget, you have, you know, limited resources, and that's understandable. Being a 501(c)(3), I feel that what we can do, and what I have passed out, in case you're wondering, is some of my ideas for potential renovations in the near future that I see would be beneficial to the function at the shelter. The beauty of that is, I believe, with having the 501(c)(3), many of these projects can be funded in terms of the resources needed. For example, the kennels, our runs. We have many kennels and runs. We're always at capacity or overcapacity. Many of those runs and kennels aren't even operable. We have literally some of them held together with boards and zip ties to just be able to house an animal in them. And I get that funding is limited from the county standpoint. However, a 501(c)(3) being onboard and in the building can reach out for grants. And there are many foundations, and I already have a really great gale. In fact, we've already reached out and successfully obtained a grant for spay neuter program, $15,000 worth, which, without even having this yet in place. So, our hope is to be able to reach out to these foundations as the approval is given for some of these ideas, new kennels, housing, playyards, anything like that. We can reach out to these foundations because I will tell you this, from having done this before, which I was the Executive Director of a shelter in the Chicago area for 26 years, there is nothing these foundations love more than a really ugly before picture and a really pretty after picture. And I feel that I can actually bring that experience to the table. We have, my, my ex-husband and I also ran many, multiple veterinary clinics, so I'm familiar with the animal husbandry, housing, sourcing of those specific needs. So, when I say collaborative, I'm hoping that from our standpoint, we can bring in the funding, we can assist with the generation of, for example, bringing in a food vendor into our program to help provide food for the animals, take that off of the budget. In the meantime, allow the county then to bring in and by taking the animal control aspect out of the shelter and leave the shelter to run as a 501(c)(3) with ultimately, and it may be an optimistic goal, but I hope it's an attainable goal, of a no-kill shelter someday. We are, we strive every day to, to achieve that already with, without those resources. So, what I would like to do is, you know, something that Warren had asked me when we first met on this, he said, let's just say, we get the green light, let's do this tomorrow. What do you need to have to move forward? And that was a very valid question, and from that standpoint, one of the very first things I would say, if I was going to take this over in terms of management and overseeing the shelter, we need the animal control to be under the jurisdiction of the Sheriff's Department. End of story. Historically, that's where it's been. Most have it there. I'm not sure how it ended up not being there. That's before my time. And, and speaking of time, what is my time? But I will not take on that responsibility. These animal control officers literally go out and risk their lives on a daily basis with little or no support right now. They need the legal backing of the Sheriff's Department behind them to do the job right. And so, when I take this on, I'm looking at that as one of the key prongs. We already have Officer Fosler, who is willing to step up to oversee animal control. The officers love her. She's a volunteer for Positive Shelter. She does, you know, she's fostering some of her pups right now. She knows our program inside and out. She would be able to, from within the Sheriff's Department, oversee it properly and take care of these guys like they deserve, because these guys are, are worth their weight in gold. So, that would be pretty much the very first line in the sand that I would like to say must happen in order for this project to move forward from our standpoint. There's a lot of other smaller specifics. For example, one of the things that I look to is we want to build a stronger staffing. I think we can do that. I've put the numbers together in the budget. We've gone over them. It's going to be tight, but again, I'm hoping with being able to reach out and run some donation, deal of fundraisers, bring in grant money, whatnot. My hope is that at some point, we will be able to have the proper staffing in place, but knowing that there's going to be some transition, some transitory period if we do end up taking this over, I want you to understand, because I am not in the shelter per se, I am not running the shelter per se, I cannot reach out to these entities, there's going to be a lag. I want to make sure people like Isabel, our shelter manager, her assistant Alex, whoever we do hire in, that they are going to be taken care of in the interim while this transition is happening. So, that's why in my proposal, I specifically listed or, or mentioned a safety net of sorts. For example, one of the things, if we are talking more on a specific level, that I would love to see is, I need to do some research and find out how I'm going to take care of benefits, health insurance, things like that, for a very small staffing. I've heard there's options out there, but I need to look into them. There hasn't been a point for me to look into them without knowing whether or not we're moving forward. So, once I have that green light, all of these things can kind of fall in place, but one of the things I would ask for, you know, on a specific level for the county to consider is for our two employees that do wish to stay onboard with the shelter, can we look into a Cobra coverage for them, for example, through the county to take care and make sure that they are going to be okay until we can get up and running, get our ball rolling adequately to, to take over on programs like that. So, when I talk about collaborative, that's the side of the county that I'm hoping I'm going to get the support, especially in the beginning, to move forward with this project. It's a big undertaking, but I feel that we all have our hearts in the right place. We want to do right. We want to see the shelter to be a, basically, something that is looked at with pride in the community, and I think we have a lot of, a lot of the right components onboard already to move forward with that. So, with that being said, are there any specific questions, things that are, that need clearing up that I can answer before I...
I just wanted to say, I'm, I'm really impressed with your information that you sent out to us. A lot of work goes into that. I believe I read in there, isn't that your daughter?
No. I wish she was, but...
I thought it said you and your daughter were...
No, we actually have, so I, my name's Meg Kramer. This is Isabel Evans. Carrie Paskewin is the treasurer, interim treasurer for our board, and that is her daughter.
Okay.
Carrie brings the, the numbers and the accounting end of it into our...
And I think we all realize we've humanized animals. I'm the worst. I talk to my cat just like I talk to my wife, and it talks back to me, and I give it food, whatever he wants. And so, I appreciate what you've done here, and I hope we can move forward with it.
Thank you.
Sheriff, did the animal shelter used to be...
They did, yes, sir.
When did that change?
Seven maybe? I'm not for sure, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I think that's pretty close. It was underneath the sheriff, then it was standalone, then it went back, went to the Health Department because there were some concerns about some, the rabies vaccination process, and that was the solution at the time, was to put it under the Health Department.
I've gotten a lot of calls about this. I absolutely would support for that, to take place, for that to go back under the Sheriff's Department.
Well, just a second. Yeah, there will be an ask associated with that, and I'd like to sit down with my two liaisons, because first and foremost, there's not a, a, a general statute in place that would compel me to take that, just to make that clear. So, again, I would like to sit down with my two liaisons to discuss that ask. But when, I will echo what she said about Deputy Fosler. She would be absolutely amazing. She has been amazing. She's actually, I think, the first time she put one in, in, in local jail for, say, 30 days for misuse of a, of a horse. So, yeah, first offense for this lady, she went to jail for 30 days, which she should have. The horse was very poor. I don't see how that poor horse is still alive. But again, I'd like to sit down with you two, maybe the end of this week, beginning of the next, and just speak about that ask.
I think it's also important to know that we are not required to have this. We are not required to have animal services. We are not required to have animal control. We are required by law to have a dangerous dog board. Is that correct? So, and, and I hate to say it, I understand what these poor officers have gone through over the last several years of not having any really authority to do anything. They go out there, this neighbor's ticked off at that neighbor, and they're trying to mediate this problem, and they have no authority to do so. And, and so, I feel their pain. But if we're going to have it, it needs to work, and right now, it's not working. So, whatever that looks like, I mean, you know, if the sheriff says, hey, I don't want it, then that we need to look at something else to... But in my opinion, animal services need to go back to a nonprofit with some staffing with the volunteers, and, and not to say anything about Isabel. I know, I've been over there several times, and, and the work that they're doing, and they're, they're strapped, and, and they're doing the best they can. But I really truly think with a few committed, paid staff members and volunteers at a nonprofit, the animals in Macon County take care of much better. Thank you for what you're willing to do.
Thank you, and I do, I, I 100% agree with you, and I do feel, taking this on, especially initially, there's going to be a lot of work to be done, but I do look forward to us working a lot smarter, not necessarily a lot harder, down the road. And I think it's going to be beneficial, this idea of separation of, of services, the animal control, where they get the support they need. I've already, in fact, if you had a chance to glance at the blueprints, I've already sort of marked off and talked with Travis, and, you know, I hate to tell you, on all of those projects, he didn't tell me no on any of them. But the good news is, is none of them are massive. We're talking basically using what is there and just improving, making it better, making things flow better, utilizing doorways and through passes to lower the amount of time that it takes to take care of a, a room of animals. The animal control, I've actually taken and sort of built or, or described the idea of a separate wing with a coded lock, where only the, the animal control officers can go in, whether it's 2:00 in the morning, on a Sunday, whatever. That's their area. They'll have all of the supplies they need, they have their kennels, they have the cages that they would need, and the only ones that are allowed in there then would be the employees, once the animal control officers communicate with them what's going on with the, with the specific animals. So, the idea that we would have a wing that is designated for their use and their use only, so that the guys can do what they need to do and the sheriffs can, you know, they're not going to be dealing with, you know, housing the animals or anything like that. I'm, I've, I've got that planned for, in our, you know, in the confines of the existing building. So, that would be one of the very first projects that I would hope that we would look at if we do get the approval to, to move forward in that direction and have animal control separate, that we would look into the idea of getting that wing built and up and running as quickly as possible.
And I'm like Mr. Shields, my animals, I have five, three rescue dogs.
Nice.
So, every night, I have five dogs sleeping in my bed, and they're down this side, this side, across my feet, everywhere else.
I get it.
And, yeah, so, I mean, I have a wild turkey that will come running to me.
Oh.
So, my deer, my turkey, all those, I just feed all of them all the time. So, it's just, I'm an animal lover, and the only thing that I would like, and it may be in part of the plan, is anytime I think that taxpayers' funds are put into a nonprofit organization, a non-governmental organization, there should be checks and balances by the county. So, I would, I would ask that if this moves forward, that the county is still involved in where your funds are and...
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, no, I'm, like I said, I'm hoping this is going to be a, a team effort, a collaborative effort from the get-go. I don't see how it can work otherwise. So, yeah, with that being said, yes, I, I am presenting this with the idea that we will be supporting the efforts of the shelter and that you will be supporting our efforts, and that's, that's a given. And that's, that's a given. So, and with that, I want to, I would love to quote the eloquent lyrics of Rush, where they say, "And the men who hold high places must be the ones who start to mold a new reality closer to the heart." And I'm looking to all of you to keep that in mind as we move forward, especially with the idea that we have tentatively selected a name for our shelter, which would be Heart of the Mountains Adoption and Rescue. Okay?
Wonderful.
Appreciate you.
So, any other comments from the board?
What about timeframe? Do we say yes to what's that timeframe?
A lot of that would depend on what happens with animal control, being able to give them the wing that they need. If I have the crew to do it, and Travis said I do, I can get the kennels in. We had talked tentatively about January 1st. I don't know if that's way too soon, if that's way too optimistic, but, you know, moving forward, I know this, we're all onboard. We're ready to do it. I'm ready to do it.
I'll add to that. I think our initial conversation, I think we were thinking probably 90-day window would be the minimum. Of course, obviously, we have to develop a contract which would include the provisions that Commissioner Sherrill was talking about, and process how the, the transfer of funds would work and get some things in order. So, I'm, I'm thinking it would be a minimum 90 days from the time that you made that decision. It could be more, depending on what other issues we might run into.
Well, thank you for your presentation and your time and volunteerism. I think we've got some wrinkles to iron out, and I think we'll be in touch.
Sounds great.
It's wonderful.
And if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think Sheriff Hobrooks is ready to go right now, right?
Go catch your dog. All right, old business. Update on Burnington Iowa Fire Department Manager Caden.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I just want to give you a really quick update on the Fire Protection Services in the Burnington, Iowa, community. Obviously, since our last meeting, we've entered into a contract to have those services provided by Cali Volunteer Fire and Rescue. Eric and I participated in a mediation session with them the following week, and all parties, those folks brought their board of directors in, brought the leadership in. We sat down, went through a mediation process, and all parties agreed to an assignment of assets, debts, and indemnity agreement to transfer the assets that are currently there that the, those residents have paid for, to keep those in that community, to provide service. And there were some provisions in that agreement to make sure that, that that did take place. The deed to the Dave's Creek Station has been transferred over to Cali Fire and Rescue's name. The other station, which was on Iowa Church Road, actually sits on leased properties with a third-party property owner. We did negotiate an assignment of lease with that, so that lease has actually been signed over. There was a, some days in the agreement to, that assets had to be inventoried and all the, everything transferred over, and keys transferred, and we actually had staff there today, and as of 6:50 PM today, those folks have completed that inventory, got those assets transferred over, completed the inventory to make sure everything was there and to make sure that was a smooth process. So, just wanted to make you aware of that, that that service has been, continued to be provided in that area. We're confident that it will, will meet the needs of the folks in that community, and hopefully, will even get better as time goes on. I think one of the provisions we discussed was a community meeting, so I think that's going to come fairly quickly to let folks down there know what's going on. Couple of things to keep in mind, obviously, this was a true test of our contract. One of the things we may want to do in the upcoming three to six months or nine months is, is take a good, hard look at that contract that we have to make sure it meets what we need it to do, to see if there's anything we want to, any changes we want to make in that, anything we want to, may have learned out of this that we want to, to go with going forward. Obviously, fire protection is, is serious business, and we've, we've been through some pretty serious situations in the last 12 months, and I think we want to, going forward, we want to see how to address those to make sure that, that we don't have that situation pop up again. I know we're not the only ones. I spoke to Kevin King, who's the manager in Jackson County. They're looking at some changes to their system, particularly on the financial end. They're looking at doing a service fee like we are. They don't, they don't have a service fee for all their area. They're looking at how that would affect them over there. We've had some conversations. Swain County's looking at adding some staff, but they're going to make those folks county employees instead of with the fire departments. That's something that we had thought about several years ago. We just never, never really got there with it. So, I think the timing's good for us, even though the situation wasn't ideal. I think we, I think going forward, we, we use it as a learning experience, and we try to make our, our system better as we go forward.
Chairman, I know there's been a lot of stuff out there on social media and in the newspapers and such, and the responsibility of this board is to make sure that the folks in each district has the protection that they're paying for. And we were lacking that in this district, and we moved forward after many opportunities for them to improve. But, I think it's also, I'm, I'm really appreciative of the work that Jimmy and everybody's done to make this transition, Eric, you, and everybody, to get this process finalized, because it was very worrisome knowing that people didn't realize in Burnington community, they really didn't have protection that they were paying for. Also, a lot of the members from Burnington Fire Department has applied for membership to continue to serve, which is absolutely awesome that they were willing to do it. They're there to serve the people, not serve the fire department. And the, now that the merge has happened, I really feel that the, the taxpayers and the property owners are now going to receive class number one protection that we were lacking for a little while. And, and to be honest with you, I hope Burnington service is the best in the county. So, that's, I, I just think, it was sad to see it happen, but it had to happen. There was no, no other way out. And so, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, so in your packet, you were provided several nonprofits that applied for the community funding pool. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Breeden and Commissioner Antoine, maybe for some discussion and approval of community funding pool applications.
So, we received five applications for the community funding pool. Several of these, I think all of these, except for the last one, have applied in the past and received funds. So, roughly, what we've put on the approval sheet here for everyone to look at is, it gives amount requested and the amount that we recommend, and the total approval amount is $37,000. $10,000 going to Kids Place, $10,000 to Reach of Macon County, $10,000 to Macon Medical Assistance Program, and $7,000 to Read to Me. The only one in question that we had was the Highlands Hurricane Swim Team, which is a 501(c)(3), but it's a sports team, and although it is a worthy cause, and it, you know, just one of those tough ones that, you know, if you start, we start funding every sports team, I don't know if we want to open that up. It's never been done before. That was the first time we've ever had one, I think. Well, I shouldn't say that. They might have applied before, I wasn't on the board then, but I just didn't think it was appropriate for us to start funding those things, and Mr. Antoine can?
No, I think it's kind of a double-edged sword, because although I would be in favor of funding that, but when I look at all these other leagues that we have in the county, there'd be no way for us to be able to fund every single one of those. So, you know, sad to say no, but we can't, we wouldn't be able to do that one.
What was the Macon Medical Assistance Program? Who was the lawman for it?
And prior to that, they had, we had funded them in '21, '22 for $5,095. That's the amount we recommended was $10,000.
We had five applicants?
Five applicants.
So, there was no explanation on the swim team, what they were needing funds for?
I believe their application, I don't like to have their actual application in front of me. They were, they were going to do a trip somewhere, and it was to fund a, an event trip somewhere, I believe is what their application actually said.
All right.
So, in the $37,000, that leaves $28,000 that was budgeted. There was a maximum amount budgeted for community funding pool for $75,000.
$75,000, which should leave you $38,000.
$38,000, yeah, sorry.
And you can certainly leave that money there, you can, you may have some more stuff pop up during the year, you can certainly appropriate more tonight. That money doesn't go away, obviously, so that money will still be there for whatever decision you want to make with it.
It's hard to appropriate money when there's no applicants for it, so.
I see Jennifer here. Jennifer, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say?
Other than?
She's at Reach.
I'm the Assistant Director with Reach of Macon County, and I would just, I guess I would just say that, I mean, I know there's been a lot of discussion about funding nonprofits. I would encourage folks to look at how certain and specific you'll make a call.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry to do that to you, but I can't hear you.
Well, hi, Mr. Shields. I would actually just encourage you folks to think about how the money that you are contributing, what that actually saves the county in the long term. When you're looking at nonprofits like Kids Place, like Reach of Macon County, if our services ceased to exist tomorrow, the amount of county dollars that you pour in through county employees, county time, is far greater than the amount of money that you are allocating to those funding sources. Easy example would be if we, if our shelter did not exist, the amount of time that law enforcement alone would have to spend when working with individuals in domestic violence, sexual assault, or trafficking situations to, to identify appropriate or safe housing would be extensive, whereas right now, they're able to pick up a phone and say, "Hey, we have a victim. How can we work together to get them to safe housing?" And so, as you have those larger discussions, I would encourage you to think about that. And certainly, you know, placing, you know, if you wanted to look at placing parameters on what types of nonprofits, I mean, part of, you know, the $10,000, that's all we could ask for. You know, we may have asked for more, if we could have asked for more. Again, that's a pretty small overall percentage, I think, of the overall money that, like, our agency expends in terms of the services that we provide our community. So, I do think that nonprofits provide, they provide a vital service to the community, and so I would just encourage you to think about that as you have your discussions, and certainly, I know Reach, of course, would be open to answering any questions about how that money is utilized and how that money is leveraged as well, not just locally, but on a state and federal level, how that money is utilized. So, and I'm glad to answer questions. I did not know if you have here, but certainly glad to answer any questions if you have them.
Well, I'll just say that I think through my comments of nonprofits are absolutely essential to the benefit of the county, all counties, all cities, all people. So, my comment is not to downplay what nonprofits do. My comment is simply the fact that it is not the role of the government to tax its citizens to choose who they give their money to. The nonprofits, you know, we've had two fundraisers by one person this year and have created $100,000, $130,000. We have a lot of people coming in, talking about, "We need to keep funding." Well, let's take all these people that come in and say, "Let's keep funding these nonprofits, and let's, let's create a committee and figure out how to do fundraisers like this one individual has done." She hasn't done it herself, she's had a team to do it, but she's done a fantastic job. First annual fundraisers and the amount of money people are willing to give in this community and all communities, but you got to ask for it. And unfortunately, nonprofits, and I'm not saying all nonprofits, have forgotten how to ask for that money. It's easier to come to the government and say, "Give me the $75,000 for Week 5," or whatever, than it is to create a committee to do fundraisers, and then you create a community that's involved in exactly what your organization does. And I'm not against you, I'm not against any of them. I think your service is wonderful. At the same time, I don't think it's the role of the government to tax its citizens to give money to nongovernmental agencies.
So, we'll have a difference of opinion there, because obviously, I disagree with that. However, I would say that it sounds to me internally that maybe simply talking about different parameters could help with some of those concerns. You know, again, the percentage of money that we receive from the funding pool, and when you're talking, I can only speak to Reach, I can't speak to any other nonprofit, but the percentage of funding that we receive from the, the funding pool is nowhere near what our annual budget is in terms of how, and so when you talk about people asking or fundraising, you know, we, I know we are doing that, and so I guess we view in some ways a collaborative. Like, we are providing, like, again, I can't speak to any other nonprofit, but we are providing a service that is like something our community needs to have. Like, it is a vital, life-saving service. You know, when you're saying that Reach of Macon County provides services to more than 550 individuals a year, we provide shelter to more than 125 men, women, and children a year, for over like 6,000 nights of shelter. We don't have a brick-and-mortar homeless shelter here. The closest one is 45 Minutes. And so, I, I hear what you're saying. We do have a difference in, maybe a difference in philosophical opinion, that's totally fine, so I respectfully disagree, but I also think that maybe some of those concerns might be addressed collaboratively if you come together as a committee to look at those. Transparency, I know Reach is certainly welcome to provide transparency. We have a budget, we have a board, we could do an audit every year, and so looking at where our money is going and how it's being spent, and accountability, I think we're totally fine with that. If that is a concern, it sounds like maybe it's a little bit deeper than that, but certainly, we are willing to, to meet halfway in terms of providing some of that transparency and information. So, and I am, you know, like I said, I appreciate your feedback.
Let me give you a little of what my insight is on this as a retired firefighter. How many times have you seen boot drives out here in the community? You know what I'm saying about a boot drive? Firefighters are out there with the, with the fire boots, asking for donations.
I have not personally seen that, but.
The reason why you don't see those is because they have an annual budget, the people are taxed for their fire district. We used to do those. We used to have cookouts, we used to do all this stuff.
Right.
But, once the tax system started funding the fire departments, that stuff sort of went out the door. And that's what I'm talking about.
I understand.
And, and so, it's easier to ask the gov, and I, I understand, $10,000 is not going to break this county. It's really the principle. not going to break this county. It's really the principle of what the tax system is.
I can appreciate that.
And thank you so much for what you guys do. I'm grateful for it.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate your perspective. Yes, sir. Is there any other questions?
Largely in support of what you're saying. It's really a, a big, it's a matter of opinion in a lot of ways. Okay. To me, as a taxpayer, I don't mind putting money into worthy causes, causes like this. And I think you would, we'd probably find, it's my opinion, we'd probably find a majority of the citizens who wouldn't mind putting money into something like this. To me, it's the same as tithing, you know, when I go to church. You know, it's one thing to put it into a cause like that, because if you look at what you guys do as Reach, that's, that's a lot of work. And a lot of lives get saved through that. You can't put a price on that. So I do understand the perspective you're coming from. I'm, I'm in total agreement with that.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew. Any other questions I can answer?
I, I can support what you're saying, but also I've been with Kids Place for thirty-plus years. And we did a little math here a few months ago. This ten thousand dollars is just a drop in the bucket of what we need. And usually it's a check in the box saying that the county is participating.
Right.
But we looked at the staff out there that the Kids Place has. It would call, it would, if that dissolved today, it would cost the county a quarter of a million dollars
Yes.
to replace that.
Yes.
And so we are saving taxpayers' monies.
Absolutely.
And by having this, and have this in your community, it just, and I appreciate what you do, work with you. It's, it's great. But these two organizations, plus these other organizations, definitely earn their money. And I'll say this, I'm not joking, but in last weekend with our eight-two-eight things, we don't have a lot of Josh Youngs in the community that will come out and grub, grub in the ground and run in the ground, bring his whole family out, and put in the money, then give it back to them. We don't have many people like that.
That's the kind of people you like when they win fifty-fifties.
I'm telling you. And so I'm just glad to see him here. The last time I saw him, he's on the ground grubbing around. And so I worry about him. But appreciate his whole family, what they did.
Yes. Any other questions I can answer?
Thank you, Ms. Lynn.
Thank you.
So I would just say, if that is the case, then instead of having a committee to choose and take applications for this money, why shouldn't it, if this money is so important to these organizations, why aren't they just committed on the budget process and forget about the committee to select who they are? So if, if it's that important, then the next budget cycle, there should be, it should label there, we're going to give ten thousand, ten thousand, five thousand, seven thousand, and forget about the application process. So realistically, when you ask for donations, people give you more money than you, than they normally would if you set a fee. And so I'm not, I'm not against them. I just think that it's, it's wrong for, and Danny and Barry, thank you for taking this on and going through the applications and everything. We have five applications. We didn't award all the money. But to me, these people have been waiting since June of twenty-four, correct, Lori? For this money, for it to be awarded?
We had them awarded May or June of twenty-five.
Of twenty-five. So, so how do you budget things when you don't know what money you're actually going to get? So you can't budget ten thousand dollars for Reach if you don't know you're going to be awarded that. So at the budget cycle, if it says, we're going to give them ten thousand dollars, then they know what they got.
I agree. So at this time, let me go ahead and make a motion that we approve this as presented, so we can award them this money.
Your motion by Commissioner Breeden.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Antoine Beechey. Commissioner Antoine, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm, stating aye for the record. Any opposed? Please let the record reflect five-oh, Ms. Tammy.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, Ms. Jennifer. All right, item C, old business, consideration of revisions to landfill design and construction agreement. McGill and Associates.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll start, and then I'll let these folks fill in. Obviously, we went back to bid on the landfill sale after the last meeting. And then, of course, there's some changes that had to occur for that to happen. And that's what we're going to discuss tonight, is the, the follow-up process with McGill for that.
Right. And so I think everyone has, does everyone have a copy of the letter, right?
Yes.
So if I, if I can, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have, just please interrupt me. I want to make sure everyone gets their questions answered. But looking at the scope of services and everything that we had to do since we bid the first phase three sale two, we of course, one thing we did during, during design of the first sale, we started with a six to seven acre sale. We ended up realizing that based on the growth, that we, once that sale was designed, once the bedrock was, and the water elevations were known, then we had to determine where the base of that landfill was. That landfill gave us roughly, you know, three and a half to seven years, depending on where the two A was built, or the whole cell was built. We realized that the two A was not going to necessarily provide the airspace goal for the county. So we, we proceeded to design topo additional twenty-four point nine acres and design the full footprint that you see there in the bid. It's going to be a two A, which would be two A and two B combined. Okay. So that's what's in that first one. Also, we had to look at the environmental impact analysis and look at the four oh one, four oh four permits associated with those. We then also, after the bids came in, as we know, that they were over planned budget, we redesigned pertinent features of sale two A. We performed takeoffs and negotiated with the responsible low bidder, which was Shamrock Incorporated at the time. We developed a cost analysis to evaluate the feasibility of various construction and hauling options for Macon County's waste management program. Just looking at the lost, you know, the delta of going to a hauling operation, having to build a transfer station, and then only what those costs are based off some phone calls and from other estimates for other clients of ours, based on similar, similar haul distances. And of course, now the county has gone out for a true, an actual quote for, for hauling. When did that come in? Okay, so hopefully right there, when we receive bids the next time, we'll be able to compare that on the actual volumes. Okay, the additional prequalification, of course, is exactly what it is. We modified the prequalification, relaxed some of those prequalification criteria, hoping to get more local participation. We're allowing them to get some of this prequalification that we asked for previously under the GC, to be able to get that under a qualified sub. Okay. We've done that. Now revise plans and bids. Of course, when you take a project like this, you can indeed, you know, reject all bids. But in order to rebid the exact same project, that, you really need to make a substantial effort to make a change in that project. So what we did is we tried to make some changes to some things that may not be completely essential, from some grading and sediment ponds and some other things on the periphery, as well as we were bidding it as a two A primary and a two B alternate add option. So we had to revise the drawings to accommodate some of those requests. And then rebidding and award is kind of, stands on its own. We're in the process of doing that now. Take bids on the fourth.
Yes.
Yes. Bring them to you, back to you with a recommendation. We certainly hope by the thirteenth. So that's what we are, that's where we are. Basically, I'll summarize page four of that proposal to you, and then answer, answer any questions you may have. Our original that we set out to was, with all those numbers, were four hundred and eighty-eight thousand eight hundred dollars. By asking these increases, some of these numbers, we know what these numbers are. Some of these numbers are, if you'll notice, are hourly maximums, not to exceed. So that's the maximum number we'll charge you. We may indeed charge you very, charge you less. Okay. But we're giving you maximum not to exceed totals. With that's an additional ninety-seven thousand dollars. And the total after that increase will be five hundred and eighty-five thousand eight hundred dollars. Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll add on to what Mark just said. Obviously, we did go out for bid on the smaller sale with the option to add on the entire sale. And at the same time, we have an RFP out for the hauling and tipping fees if we wanted to, or we were required to haul waste somewhere else. So if we follow through with this process, when we come back, hopefully to the November meeting, we will be able to give you the exact cost of that sale or the hauling and tipping fees to haul it somewhere else, so you can compare both of those side by side. Obviously, I don't, I hate coming and asking for more money. So we, we don't like that, obviously. But the funds for this would have to come out of the solid waste fund balance, correct, Lori? Because remember, these are enterprise funds. These are not on the general fund side. And then, of course, some of those are maximal not to exceed amounts that were, that are indicated here.
I've got a couple of questions, but...
Sure.
Are there extensive amounts of import-export proposed at the site? What, what's blowing our cost up?
Gravel.
Gravel?
It's three million dollars in gravel.
And then the other part of that question is, you know, is there a, you know, an average, a cubic yard, a price per cubic yard or per square foot that, you know, regionally? And how do we trend with that?
For, we used to do a price per acre.
Okay.
So one of the first projects I worked on was Macon County landfill, twenty-nine years ago. And we did, we did sand in that. At, that we were pressured to do sand in that landfill. You know, it's against our better judgments to do sand in a landfill. Sand will move and it creates a problem. You're going to have problems with leachate standing in your landfill. And so, but at the time, I was thinking about that today. I wish I'd gone and pulled the bid tab from that first project. But it was a good, good rule of thumb for years. We could say two hundred and fifty thousand an acre, add in a little bit of money for a pump station or something like that, some of the higher-end ancillary projects, right? And then we could get to a, you know, we would have said, okay, you've got twelve and a half acre sale. You're going to be at, you know, three and a half million dollars. And I mean, it's crazy what costs have done. So to give you one now, since COVID and since these last few projects we bid, it's about impossible. Again, what we thought was a realistic number on our half was seven and a half million? Yeah, so seven and a half million, and then you add soft costs to that. You know, we thought your budget was going to be around, you know, ten million. And then your construction cost comes in at ten point two. And so it's just all over the place. And I think, I think there's so much work out there right now that it's just, you know, contractors don't have to sharpen their pencil. And I'm not against contractors. It's fair and it's a fair price. I mean, I, I mean, what I'm saying is it's fair because three, three people gave, three or four people gave within a reasonable approximation of the same price. It's what the industry is requiring right now. And it's, it's unfortunate for budgets. I understand that. But we're seeing it everywhere. It's not just in Macon County.
In other words, there's people that's not hungry right now. They're, they're not starving.
It's, it's, it's true. It's just, it's just part of society. It's fact.
Mr. Chairman, I will say, and Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, we had six pre-qualified this time, I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I believe it was six. So we have a good mix of folks. And we're hoping by going through this process that, that we will, we're hopeful that we'll get a number that we can live with. We've looked at some dates for the local government commission, which of course, we'd have to get financing approved once we get through this. We're still going to be tight, because obviously July or before, we're, we're hopeful that July is the date that we will have some serious space considerations at the landfill. So obviously, there's a little bit of urgency for us to get these numbers on the table. But the other good thing is we'll also have that hauling and tipping somewhere else. So in the event that whichever direction you decide to go, we'll, we'll know what that cost is going to be. And then, of course, tying this all together, one of the things Lori and I did this year is we got Mitch with Davenport Associates to, to put our enterprise fund into his capital improvement plan. So when we come into budget time next year, we'll tie all these pieces together and we'll be able to give you a much more solid business plan for the years going forward, no matter which direction you go, to help you make those decisions going on in the future. And if the board is inclined tonight, we would, we would need a motion to approve this, I guess amendment or change to the McGill agreement, and to approve the movement of that ninety-seven thousand dollars extra from the solid waste fund balance into the appropriate expenditure account. Is that correct, Lori?
I mean, I certainly hope the county can find a way to build the entire sale. We all know that's what needs to happen. But, you know, I don't, I don't look after the day-to-day finances of the county. I just know it's going to be more expensive in the future. And of course, there has to be something after Davenport does their thing. It has to be something to, to, to talk about how that everything's funded. But that, that's why you guys are here, to make those tough decisions. I just want to answer any questions you have.
Well, thanks for coming by. I know gravel ain't getting any cheaper.
No, it's not.
I mean, I bet it's jumped thirty percent five years. All right, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments, feedback?
I'm interested to see the comparison of hauling it out, or next month. I'm interested to see what, what that figure looks like.
We have to spend this ninety-seven thousand before we get that number to progress.
I feel like, well, the problem is, and I'm just going to speak on my personal opinion, but hauling is kind of what we do on an interim basis. But we can't haul forever. Then we're dependent on everybody else, and we already have a landfill. We're one of the few remaining landfills. So the hauling would buy us time while we can construct, you know, future expansion. But I think we have to keep a landfill. I mean, we're too far down this rabbit hole.
To answer your question, Commissioner Breeden, we, we would have to spend part of that. We might not have to spend at all, depending on where we get into in the bidding process and what we find once we do the design process. We, we have to appropriate that amount, but we may not spend up to that amount.
It's hourly max, not to exceed. On, on three of those, we basically spent some of those already given to this point, but some of those are still, it's still a projection.
But in order for us to pre-audit the agreement, we have to have the maximum amount of funds there. So of course, we'll try to, I promise you, I'll try and value engineer it as much as possible.
I don't have it in front of me. But Ms. Lori, what's the budget amendment?
So the budget amendment would be to appropriate ninety-seven thousand dollars of solid waste fund balance to cover this and to approve an amendment to McGill's contract in the amount of ninety-seven thousand dollars.
I'd like to make a motion that we amend McGill's contract and appropriate ninety-seven thousand dollars.
From solid waste fund balance.
From solid waste fund balance.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Shields. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by raising your right arm, stating aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I would like to...
Ms. Tammy, let the record reflect five-oh.
I would like to address Jamie with, you know, we talked about beating apples to apples. You know, you presented this stuff to us for the cost of, but I would like you to present to this board in the future, when this comes back, the value of the land that we're talking about creating this new sale, the cost to open that sale, cost to operate the landfill, employees, salaries, benefits, equipment, et cetera, the entire cost package for that, cost to close the sale, and cost to monitor the closed sale for decades for the timeframe. And that way... In that way, we can get a realistic idea of where the taxpayers are going to save money.
And I understand what you're saying, but some of that is just completely unknown. The monitoring for a lifetime of the landfill, some of those parameters, we won't know, we won't know the cost, you know, in the future. I could tell you what it costs right now.
Ms. Jamie, come on up, come on up, Ms. Jamie.
Sorry.
Sorry, I mean, just some of those just would be unknown. So, I mean, I could estimate it for you, but, but I can definitely try.
Well, and, and the reason why, you know, and the facts and stuff, I need to approach some of the board members in Haywood County. But there was an article in the newspaper talking about the company that owns the landfill in Haywood County, and how profitable that is for them. And the commissioners are quoted in there as to how much money the taxpayers are saving by that being privatized. And it, how long has it actually been, or has it ever been, studied to have an incinerator in this county, or privatizing the landfill, or hauling this? It seems like this is the first time that this study has actually happened. And it's worthwhile to know that we're, we're getting the best bang for the buck, and not destroying valuable land in this county, and the taxpayers overpaying where they could be saving money. So that's, okay.
Thanks, Ms. Jamie. All right. Any other comments? Approval of architectural services for National Guard Armory renovation, Manager K.
So, Mr. Chairman, back in March of 2021, the Board of Commissioners entered into a lease agreement with Southwestern Community College to use the space at the old National Guard Armory building. And that was for them to conduct fire, EMS, law enforcement, park service training in that building. And part of the lease agreement was that we would make some renovations and remodel that building and bring it up to a usable format for them to use. There wasn't necessarily a timeframe on the agreement, they've actually been using the building to some extent. But essentially, the agreement at the time was that when they constructed the barn building, which is a separate capital project, which is the actual fire training facility that's in the works out there, we would try to have our renovations done at the time that that building was in place. They've actually started construction on that building, it's a modular building, they've hired a contractor, we went to the pre-construction meeting back in the fall. You're going to see some more movement with that facility, they've hit just a few delays, but by summer of next year or fall, that facility should be operational. So it's basically, it's time for us to, to look at that agreement that we, we had to make those renovations to that facility. In your capital improvement plan, for the last couple of years, we've allocated 2.5 million for that, that renovation. So what we did is we went out, we put out RFQs for architectural design and planning services for that facility. We received three RFQ submittals back. One of those companies, they were all good proposals. One of those proposals, we did not have any experience with the designer. One of them, we had some minimal experience through a partner project, not necessarily with Macon County Government. And the other one, we, we've had some extensive service provided. And the firm that we decided would be the most prudent for us to use would be Looper Architectural Design and Planning. They've actually already, as back when this initial agreement in 2021 took place, those folks had already taken a look at that facility, to figure out what they thought it needed. And honestly, they're a little bit ahead of the game as far as the, the process. So after we just made that decision, Joe Allen and I reached out to them and negotiated proposal from them to provide design and, design and development services for that facility. And they have come back with a proposal for $181,120.53 to lead that project all the way from design, all the way through construction, all the way out the other end. Obviously, this again is like the same agreement we talked about with McGill. You know, if we bring you design and you come back and say, no, we don't want to do that, obviously, then we're not going to spend all that funding. But we do feel that based on our experience with this firm, we're very comfortable, this is the firm that did the, the work on the library, they did some other work for us in various other projects. We think that based on some conversations, that this is my goal. We think, and Joe Allen can reiterate this if I don't say this correctly, but one of the other projects at Southwestern is the resurfacing of the, the driving track that we talked about for CDL licensing purposes. Separate project that we're not necessarily going to talk about tonight, but I know they're already working on some revised bids for that, which are going to come in under the estimate that we got in the budget process. They're also working on agreement with a neighboring community college to provide that instruction. So what I hope to is get this design started on this facility, and for that 2.5 million dollars, not only do the renovation to the armory, but be able to provide that resurfacing of that driving track, pull all this together, so that this facility will be open, hopefully fall of next year, and that driving track, once we get all the bids in and get into spring where we could possibly pave it, have it ready for a first CDL class, if we can make everything work out by next fall, pull all of those projects together for the 2.5 million dollars that you originally anticipated. So that's our goal. So if tonight, if you see fit to follow through with this, I would request approval of Looper Architectural Design and Planning to do the design and development process. I actually don't necessarily need the money, the money is sitting, we have some project money that's sitting in a project for Southwestern Community College, and all we need to do is move that over to the capital fund for the National Guard Armory.
Warren, can you, now you said to start to absolute finish, not to exceed $181,120.53, but right underneath that, reimbursable expenses for printing and other job-specific office supply, additional site visits shall be billed at $850 per trip. I mean, how do you, I mean, how do you say it's only going to cost a maximum of $181,000, and then all of a sudden, we've got a clause in here that says they can bill us $850 for additional trips?
It is very difficult, and I will add, one of the things that Joe and I negotiated with them, if you look at the site visits included on page three, that originally was either eight or 10, and we went back and negotiated and said, no, we're, we're not going to go with that proposal, we need more site visits than that. So we actually increased the site visits, so hopefully, we don't get into that. I, I agree that it's difficult for me to give you the maximum, but we're, we're certainly going to try to hold it to that number as much as possible.
I mean, it's just open-ended contracts, I mean, it just, every, everyone that we ever see, it's, it's, it's open-ended. And to me, in the private sector, a guaranteed maximum price is a guaranteed maximum price, don't ask me for another penny. So this is just open-ended, that you can't guarantee what it's going to cost. And it's just, I don't operate business that way, I can't. And, but it seems like some of these government people, they can, and they do. And, you know, I'm ready to move forward with this, we've talked about this for a long time. But they may come back and say, hey, I had 20 extra visits, there's extra money that, and you can't, you can't control a budget based on, now, if there was things in there, the unknowns, as such as, oh, well, if we hit rock or something, I understand that. But to say we're going out the door with this, start to finish, this is the price. And so I have a problem with that. I mean, if they want to guarantee us $181,000, whatever this number is, I'm good, let's go with it. But I'm not happy with...
John, here's, here's something that I see in my world often, especially on renovation, if he puts in the bid 10 visits, 12 visits, and he makes those visits, but all of a sudden, something comes up that needs engineering, he's going to say, send me a picture of it, I'll see what I can do, but that one visit could, at that point in time, be monumental. You know, it's hard to get into something, and once you're in that deep, and he's already hit his contract, he's not going back out there, why would he? But it, I think, would save the county money. But I think that's why you have to trust Joe, and you have to trust Warren and Jack, they're not going to call him out there if they don't need him. But I feel like if he gets down to it, and there's critical engineering that needs to be designed...
Do we have a set of plans for an engineer to look at?
Well, this is for plans, right?
This will be for the design, the plans, we actually will have some light data of the building, it'll be developed, and then he'll bring the plans back to us, and we'll do the design off the plans. We have some existing floor plans and some other drawings out there, but we'll actually have to develop the entire...
Yeah, I don't know if I necessarily...
We're not going to call Peter, hey, why don't you come look at this, this is pretty serious, we realize that's $850 to get in, and I will say this about Looper Architectural, they're pretty good about, if we need to talk about it over the phone, we can talk about it over the phone and get things worked out. So we're, I mean, I can't promise you we're not going to have an $850 visit, but it's going to be necessary if we do. I mean, it's not going to be, hey, we need you to look at this, see if we think this color's all right.
So you said they started out with 10 visits?
It was either eight or 10, we went to 12, yes. And we actually, we cut $45,000 off because there was another, some fees in there for the metal building, some other stuff, that we're going to manage some of that ourselves. So we actually cut $45,000 off of the original proposal.
Let me back up a little bit in time, this was five years ago, four years ago, when we talked about this. I mean, is everything still on track? I mean, they asked for something four years ago, we're giving it to them five years later. I mean, what if something's changed on their end, with their plan?
It hasn't, that I'm aware of, because I've actually had a couple of meetings with them, because we've sat down, or I have at the table with them, to discuss it. We've, we've pretty much talked about the same things. We've actually value-engineered it a little bit, because like windows, we're not going to, we're trying to try not to replace the windows, we're going to get some of the dollar figures down. The biggest thing that concerns us at the moment is the roof, so we've obviously got to get somebody to give us the valuation of the roof, make the recommendation of what we're going to do. But we've already, some of the, the doors and things that we can salvage, not, that are, there's nothing wrong with them, so that, that's how we think we're going to be able to get that dollar figure down, less than what we originally thought it was going to be.
And actually, the, oh, we got, we got some AC, some ACVAC stuff in there, but the county is in the process of replacing the last heat pump in there that needs to be replaced, so we're just going to be adding AC. So we've already got some of that's been done, so it's just going to be AC added to the building now, so we don't have heat to be added.
See how well they do?
It's my goal, John, 2.5 for the whole thing.
All right. Thank you, Joe.
So how does the board feel about approval of architectural services?
We can't do without it. So I'll make a motion, we move forward with Looper Architectural Design, the plan, make a motion to that.
A guaranteed maximum price is what you get.
I have the $181,120.53, is that what you're talking about? Can you just please add to the motion?
I hear a motion by Commissioner Shields.
I'll say that motion.
Second by Commissioner Sherrill. Any further discussion?
Please get this done for $2.5 million.
You know what, I'll quit, if I can, I'll quit.
All right, any other discussion?
You're going to inherit this there, young one.
Hearing none, all in favor, please signify, but raising your right arm stating aye. All right, item 11, new business, non-consent agenda. Everybody had time to review the consent agenda?
Yes.
If so, I need a motion to approve, yes, sir. I hear a motion by Commissioner Breeden, second by Commissioner Antoine, beat you again. Any further discussion?
Just want to make sure that approval of the resolution in support of Operation Green Light was still on target, okay?
Yep, yep, item, item E, Operation Green Light, it's still in there. All in favor, please raise your right arm, state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hello, Ms. Tammy. All right, no appointments. Eric, do we have a closed session?
We don't, but I did have one question under category, under old business, we had the Macon County Red Cross Project, the PEC Associates.
Yeah, that's, we've already taken care of it, so it's good under consent.
All right, well, waiting on one more motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Hear a motion by Commissioner Antoine, second by Commissioner Breeden, all in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Miss Keiser, Miss Keiser.